I hear a year ago when all these blocks were being proposed, we did have a conversation with our conservation administrator, Mr. Albertson. I was in on it, the fishing game people and we had someone from Kestrel Trust there too. So Kestrel Trust didn't want to take a pass at any of these and neither did the fishing game service. And right next to their game management area, I thought it would have been natural but the reasoning that they had was they only have so much money and that this was pretty much a building lot. And they weren't going to spend top dollar from their funds for buildable properties. They were looking for something else in terms of maybe a larger tract with a lower per acre cost that had some type of substantial value to the state. This just adds five acres onto the game management area. It doesn't have any intrinsic value for conservation purposes in and of itself.
This is...
That conversation happened when it was a much larger chunk, right? It was 30 something?
Yeah, before I was getting... We were looking at all 14 lots if they were going to have a parcel.
So this is a six by size of what they've already said no thanks on?
And Kestrel Trust took a pass on it too, which would have been the other big player in this area.
Other than natural habitat for birds or squirrels, it really doesn't have any endangered species or any kind of unique biological attributes that it brings to the table.
No. I thought, because there's a lot of ledge up there. I had walked up in there many times that it would be a good place for bat habitat. But it's not on the map. But Hybermium, isn't that what they call it? Hybermium map?
No, Hyb- yeah.
There is a map that they have for significant territory for bat habitat. It's not on that map.
Vernaculum or something.
I would have expected it would have been but it's not. So there's no critical species, no critical topography property. There's nothing really that's going to make it significant in terms of we need to step in and protect. It's just another five acres of Belchertown.
Somebody probably would have had to report bats there for it to be on the maps, I think. Was it previously farmed?
Not in this case.
Okay.
No, there was a farm. If you go down the Old Bragg Street, which they made into the path, and you go in there about a mile, there was the farm that they ended up taking over, which was the basis of the original Herman Covey Game Management Area, which was about 1,200 acres. And there was an old dairy barn in there that had been converted to a layer floor poultry. A layer floor poultry operation. But the barn's gone and all the houses are gone. And there are just cellar holes that back in there now. So any usable farmland was, once you had gotten up over that ridge and were heading down towards the Swift River, there was land you might consider to be agricultural significant. It's there but now it's the state conservation area.
I was actually asking for a different reason because I have heard that if the parcel is not quite enormous, if there has been farming and there might be debris from a previous farm and at times they use different products than they do now, then the cleanup is not...
Less desirable because of the dirt.
Unless it were a very large parcel with a small part that may...
No, it's original. That's all ledge up there. It's the same ledge that runs all the way along the quab and ends up down in South Belchertown and down where that last subdivision spent 10 years drilling it out of the ground.
So what I'm hearing is, I'm not hearing a lot of...
I hear a year ago, when all these lots were being proposed, we did have a conversation with our conservation administrator, Mr. Albertson. I was in on it, the Fish and Game people, and we had someone from Kestrel Trust there, too. So, Kestrel Trust didn't want to take a pass at any of these, and neither did the Fish and Game Service. But right next to their game management area, I thought it would have been natural, but the reasoning that they had was they only have so much money, and that this was pretty much a building lot. And they weren't going to spend top dollar from their funds for buildable properties. They were looking for something else in terms of maybe a larger tract with a lower per acre cost that had some type of substantial value to the state. This just adds five acres onto the game management area. It doesn't have any intrinsic value for conservation purposes in and of itself.
This is...
That conversation happened when it was a much larger chunk, right? It was 30-something?
Yeah, before I was getting broken up.
We were looking at all 14 lots that they were going to...
So, this is a size of what they've already said no thanks on?
And Kestrel Trust took a pass on it, too, which would have been the other big player in this area. So...
Other than natural habitat for birds or squirrels, it really doesn't have any endangered species or any kind of unique biological attributes that it brings to the table?
No. I thought, because there's a lot of ledge up there on top of there. And I had walked up in there many times, that it would be a good place for bat habitat. But it's not on the map. But Hybermium, isn't that what they call it? Hybermium map?
No, Hyb- yeah.
There is a map that they have for significant territory for bat habitat. It's not on that map. I would have expected it would have been, but it's not. So, there's no critical species, no critical topography property. There's nothing really that's going to make it significant in terms of we need to step in and protect. It's just another five acres of Belcher Town.
Somebody probably would have had to report maps there for it to be on the maps, I think. Was it previously farmed? Is there...
Not this place.
Okay.
No, there was a farm. If you go down the Old Bragg Street, which they made into the path, and you go in there about a mile, there was the farm that they ended up taking over, which was the basis of the original Herman Covey game management area, which was about 1,200 acres. And there was an old dairy barn in there that had been converted to a layer floor poultry, a layer floor poultry operation. But the barn's gone, and all the houses are gone. There are just cellar holes that back in there now. So, any usable farmland was, once you had gotten up over that ridge, and we're heading down towards the Swift River, there was land you might consider to be agricultural significant. Gets in there, but now it's the state conservation area.
I was actually asking for a different reason, because I have heard that if the parcel is not quite enormous, if there has been farming, and there might be debris from a previous farm at a time when they used different products than they do now, then the cleanup is not, makes it less...
Less desirable because of the dirt.
Unless it were a very large parcel with a small part that may...
No, it's original. That's all ledge up there. It's the same ledge that runs all the way along the quab, and ends up down in South Belcher Town, down where that last subdivision spent 10 years drilling it out of the ground.
Like 20.
So, what I'm hearing is, I'm not hearing a lot of...
Which was an APR farm. It just sounded like it made sense, and it had been part of the Frank Wenzel farm. And it got broken up when he died. So, it'd be like putting the farm back together. But the select board said that they were interested in that in the end of the... You can get an A and R. I haven't been up in there in a while, so I could use sort of an overview, Mr. Doug, if you want, to give everybody an idea of what's happening here.
Okay, this is between Benson Street and Elder Street. Sort of where the triangle, or they come down to me. It's still, I don't know where it is. And it's one big piece of property, and...
Cemetery.
It is, okay, it's a cemetery. So, you know where this is, though. And then, so what this plan does is it's this one big piece, and then...
Eighteen acres.
Add these two, these new property lines to create seven building lots. And that's a big wetland that had another one there, so they'll have to work around those.
With two estate lots?
Two estate lots. So, for less, for less frontage, you've got to have more acreage to have a qualified building lot. Otherwise, it's basically 140 feet along the street, frontage, and then 40,000 square feet, which is less than an acre. That's a building lot in Belcher Town.
So, an estate lot only requires 50 feet of frontage, but 150,000 feet in the back.
Square feet, yeah.
It's also referred to as a fourth chop lot or a flaglet. Those are the other words you'll hear. We call it an estate lot, I don't know why. And we have a limit as to how many in a row you can have, and that kind of stuff. But this is pretty straightforward. Each of the larger frontage lots have got 140 feet or more of real, not illusory, frontage. They all have more than 40,000 square feet of surface area, which is the minimum required. And the two estate lots have got a 50-foot access wide. And our requirements are actually, I think it's kind of neat, they're defined as a 50-foot circle has to be able to pass. So, you know, as long as a circle can make it, that's adequate access to the backside, so.
So, their house enveloped us.
But again, all of the frontages look good. Even though there's a lot of wetlands involved, it doesn't interfere with the access to the properties.
We had had a chapter withdrawal on this one, too. So, there were a couple of meetings before this. They had this property, it was in chapter status, and we went through the same routine we did for the property before this on whether or not the town would want to exercise its right of first refusal on this property. And this time, we had, the last time, we had recommended that a further review be done because of the extent of the wetlands and its proximity to the existing town wells further up the road, at the Javish Wells, that the water district might be interested in it by part of all of it to set aside for further well development, to increase the water availability in the town. And so, that went forward, and they came back and said they weren't interested. So, that was the end of that. So, now, they've got that classification withdrawal out of the way. Now, they're looking to bust it up to sublots, which is something they had to, they had to get that out of the way first, because you can't sell them with the classification on it. So, if anybody else hadn't heard that news yet, the water department took a pass on this. They said they were interested. Was it, I don't know if they gave a reason, or did they say expense? It's a matter of saying the cost. I don't know if they gave a reason.
Yeah, I think they decided to speed it up there on the floor.
Well, the water department in town is looking for additional water sources, because the water that's available for the water district in town is about at its limit. And it's going to start becoming an impediment to further growth in the town within the water district area, because they may not be able to supply enough water. And so, the search is on, to try to find additional land that's suitably located where they could get wells in it and add it to the town water system in the middle of town. So, that's sort of in the background.
I wonder if the Springfield Water Works, whether that was an impediment to Belcher Town.
I don't imagine. You believe the key for groundwater?
So, the surveyor is Jeremy...
Crotto.
Crotto. And one of the things that I appreciate on his markings is that for each of the lots, he gives a square footage, obviously, but then he totals up what the frontage is, rather than just making us add the numbers together. I like the fact that he delineates that clearly, that, you know, here's the square footage, and here is the total frontage for each of the lots. So, I appreciate that.
Other than that, it's kind of locusts up in the upper right-hand corner. The record owners are identified up in the upper right-hand corner. All the abutters are identified. It's a conforming plan. Anybody else have any questions or issues with...
The only, and it's just a minor whatever, is on the application itself, the minimum frontage of proposed lots is listed as 140. But if I could, we do have two estate lots, and just the minimum frontage is actually 50. No big deal, overlooking that, I just make that as a point. We only have, we have one signatory. Is that sufficient to represent M and G land?
Yeah.
I noticed you didn't run anything through the Secretary of State. Just maybe as a couple of axes, you might want to check to make sure that they're still listed with, the secretary is a valid corporation, and that Mark Jackson is the one identified as the signatory on it. Are you doing that right now, Dave?
Yeah, I can do it right now.
All right, we'll just wait until they're confirmed.
Now, of course, I have to... I'm not specific, so let's see.
That corporate search website is now marked on, it's one of my toolbars.
He's just checking to make sure, because it's a corporation that's the applicant, that the corporation is squared away with the Secretary of State's office.
Yeah, should be easier with an easy time frame, so.
Well, we've done business with M and G before. We could dispose of this, and then ask Doug to make a search tomorrow morning. And if there's anything wrong, hold up the works until you come back to us again, okay?
Yeah, I agree, I got it. M and G. M and G Land Development. Let's see, resident agent is Mark Jackson. Manager is Mark Jackson, George Jackson III. Real property, Mark Jackson. That's pretty inclusive.
Yep. Okay. I think motion, we approve the A and R. For M and G Land Development LLC, for map 249, assisting lot 27, so it was one big lot. Hereafter going to be identified as lots A, B, C, D, E, F, N, G. My second, Mr. Hoffler. Any discussion on motion? He's number four in favor. Aye. Control 500. Mylar's over there, you can start that sending. I'll start the application this way.
Interesting, when we sign the Mylar, we are required to use black ink.
Look, they went down at the Hampshire Registry and...
Because they scanned the plan, so you can't read through...
We don't sign the plan, it doesn't get recorded.
We reviewed something recently where you were allowed to use blue ink or black ink, but not both. Once you started with one color, it had to be this. I think that was for the Navy. Or NASA, no, that was NASA. That was NASA.
I know they want the wils stuff in blue. They don't want black, because you can't, if it's in black, you can't tell, excuse how I was given, is you can't tell if it's an original signature, because the photocopying is so nice nowadays. But the same thing can be said for the blue. You photocopy blue signatures, you can't tell whether they're real or not.
So, in the early years in graphic design, we all had pencil sets called Monroeville Blue. And it was very terrible, and right on what was going to be... And it would show up. So, it may be that a dark blue would be defined, but...
I know one thing that I'm going to make a mistake of, is going down there with colored paper. I made a rookie mistake. I did a document on, it wasn't even, you know, like pink or something. It was like a cream colored paper. Wouldn't take it. It's got to be on white paper stock.
Why do these, why does the plan have to be on Mylar?
I don't have the answer to it.
So, they can run it for the blueprint machine.
Oh, yeah. It's been a rule forever, because the way we've always done it there.
There's worse reasons.
Okay. Anybody else want to, well, I'll let them bring it up in their individual reports if they have anything else they want to discuss before. We'll do the minutes. Minutes are previously circulated. People have had a chance to make any edits, additions, revisions. Is there any other changes people want to make tonight before we take the tour? Do we now make a vote that we approve the minutes of May 27, 2025? Our last meeting has written. My second, Mr. Hoffler, motion made, second in for discussion. Do you now want to vote in favor? Aye. Aye, with Control 5 signature. No bills. Reorganize this. Oh, this is signature page. I'm going to get that one sent over. This is a list of our official signatures. It's going to go down to the Registry of Deeds in North Hampton.
Land Court, too.
And Land Court, too. So, we send them our signatures. Somebody is really anal, they can check our signatures against the stuff that comes in on the plans, if there's any question, just to have that to say. And we reorganize the board every year, because we have elections every year. So, as we reorganize the board, we need to send that notice in every year. Annual Housekeeping Board.
Okay, so I'm asked e-poles. Does that mean I should sign it e-poles, or...
Sign it, how do you sign it?
Your legal signature.
Yeah.
Tom Planer, what, Mr. Doug, what have you got for us?
Well, last week was a big week for getting grant applications in through the state's one-stop program. Collectively, we in town applied for eight grants. Allison basically did the bulk of the work, was handling all of that. And I've just been amazed at her intense focus and the ability to get that done, all that detail work. But I worked on one full... I worked on one for extending sewer and water down to the parcel D area off Turkey Hill Road, um, and for zoning revision, that we will, um, pursue if we get the grant, um, and the Tadville Building roof replacement, which unfortunately, there was a hole in it and it was leaking a lot, and, uh, the building is solid, so we take the blue side, so we gotta deal with the roof first, and Ryan Bond, engineer, was in there, uh, a couple months ago, working up an estimate, uh, how to do it. Uh, let me see, what other grants were there, extending water and sewer to six and eight Brookshire Avenue, to make those more marketable, uh, Sports Haven, um, for continued infrastructure improvements there, um.
For six, the, six and eight, um, that's to repair the sewer, or, or to drag the line to it?
Install it, yeah.
But where is it going now?
Let's see, it goes behind, goes from like Tadville, that goes behind where the tower used to be, uh, and then up, out towards, if you go to Flowey Field and look right, the trail goes on along the sewer he's been down.
So there's septic system there?
I don't know, there was probably an old, or a, there's an existing inadequate sewer system.
Oh.
Yeah.
And so.
It was built with the state school, so it's been there for a hundred years. Probably has played.
I always thought it was, it was connected, and that this was just a, we were talking about repairing, we're talking about putting a new line in.
Yeah. So, anyway, there, yeah, there were a couple others. Also in that neighborhood, the old steam plant, if you've been by there on Pear's Road, the building's down, the tower is now scheduled to come down on Wednesday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. It's tomorrow, so, uh, we'll see if that gets to late again. Uh, we have, um, the new subdivision preliminary plan next meeting, um, and, uh, so we'll see how that goes. I got comments today from the Conservation Commission, I haven't read them yet, this afternoon. Pepper Ridge Subdivision, uh, we now have money in escrow, um, and, uh, so DPW, when they're just doing their normal paving work, they'll have it go, go over there and have it milled, and then they'll have it paved, and we'll take the money out of this escrow account.
So that saves this guy money, huh? Because now he's going to get in our contract for.
Yeah, he's gonna get it less, yeah.
For asphalt prices.
Yeah, he's gonna get it.
He doesn't have to go out and do an independent contract, he's just sort of ponying in on the town's contract, so he's getting all the benefits of having, you know, our buying power.
Yep.
And then this will become before the town next ATM.
Assuming everything else gets finished, yeah.
Because we're spending his escrow money now.
Yeah.
On the premise that it will soon become part of the cherry shoot.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, so anyway, at least that's getting done, I think, I think DPW wanted to do it this way, to be sure it got done.
That's the only idea, gets done to our parcel.
Yeah, yeah.
It was definitely problem-solving on their part.
Yeah, yeah, you were there.
Yeah.
Yep, that was very good. Now, you've met Alex, he is our, our intern, and he's a high school student over in Munson, but there's also been a Amherst College student who's been in touch with me, and, um, so I will eventually have a meeting with him and, um, see what's up and what he wants, and, and then we'll figure out what these guys can do.
So you're gonna give them a project?
Yeah, give them stuff to do, so they can learn. Maybe I'll have them revise the subdivision. He can revise the zoning bylaw, we don't need extra money.
He can work on the, that new subdivision of the voltage.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
Good. Uh, last week, there was a meeting with VHB, who's the consulting company, hired by the state to do the public input and everything about the Palmer Rail Station, how's it gonna affect surrounding town, what do you think's gonna happen, are you looking at for growth and so forth? Uh, and so there were planners there from Ware and Wilberham, and maybe some places else, and we were all basically unanimously thinking, well, I think really, you know, if it makes it easy for commuting, we could be seeing some telecommuters moving out here to get away from the high prices in the east, which is gonna make our prices go up, so.
Now, is that gonna involve Palmer, and maybe even us, in the requirement for zoning for high-density housing that's gonna be associated with it?
No, because that's not, that's not an MBTA project.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
But it is the East-West.
East-West Rail, yeah. So I figured, I don't know how many lines or runs per day they're, they plan, but, you know, I, I think if, especially for people who only need to go to Boston, you know, a couple times a week or something, boy, that'd be pretty.
Or even Worcester.
Yeah.
Community of Worcester would be.
Yep.
A lot easier that way.
Yeah, so, yeah, and even guys like you could use it. Yeah, so, anyway, yeah, yeah, people were thinking about that, but on the other hand, it could be good for certain types of business. And then cannabis, you might recall, about two years ago, the state said, you got, towns have to post social equity policies, and make those public, and of course, you have no guidance whatsoever, uh, and we still haven't really, um, but one thing we know we need to do, we've been working on, is at least get information up on, on the website. So I've been working with Kate Nadeau, our communications person, to find, very few towns have us, only, only about three so far, and so Littleton has been quite helpful, and so it's like, why not just copy theirs? So, uh, change the name of the town, and, um, maybe that works, but I don't know exactly what else is gonna be needed, but at least such should be a placeholder until we get more instruction.
I don't know how the campus commission is gonna enforce anything anyway, they can't even put a board together.
Yeah, no. Kind of weird. And also, I was at the Creative Economy meeting in this room last night, and, uh, one thing of note is, uh, the October fourth, Saturday, October fourth, will be Lake Wallace Day, so there's gonna be, they're planning a five K, uh, run, and there's gonna be music, and who knows, jugglers, acrobats, I don't know, all sorts of festive music.
Elephants, they had elephants.
They might have elephants, juggling elephants.
There're turtles and frogs.
I'm sure Louise Lady will have her, her pond life displayed, which is pretty cool. So anyway, yeah, that's gonna be it, and I guess we can call that the official opening of the, the completed Lake Wallace Sensory Trail. Uh, right now, the structures are all done, and all the contractor has to do is get back out there and, and just finish all the way to the trail surface, and a couple of road repairs and things like that, so, um, get out there and walk it.
And walk, and I enjoy it.
And you pick up your doggy's poop.
Yes, I do.
And you don't leave the bag on the path. Just bring it home.
Sorry, I silenced my phone, but it didn't work on the.
And then I'll, I'll, I'll save the other festive day announcement for those officials who are up in there.
Do you want help with the poster for Wallace Day, Lake Wallace Day?
Oh, you're offering?
I'm offering.
Ooh, I'll have to tell everyone. Okay, I'm done.
Also, Mr. Doug, I have letters, anything you'd like to share with the board tonight?
No, I have nothing yet.
Yours, right, anything you'd like to share with the board tonight?
No, not today.
I'm, I'm good. Elizabeth?
The only thing I was gonna share, I, I shared via email earlier.
Share with the community.
Oh.
Yeah.
Share with the community, right, well, we've got, um, White Day twenty twenty-five on June twenty-first, ten AM to five thirty PM, Hawks, we have a bear specialist coming from US, from Mass Fish and Wildlife, sorry, we have someone from Kestrel coming to speak, we have a pollinator representative speaking, we have a couple concerts, we have historic reenactors, I'm forgetting something, but Austin Burger people will be there with their burger truck, and we'll have Antonio's Pizza, and all sorts of fun things, so, uh, I think I sent, I meant to send the program to all of you, which actually has the timing of things, so that, don't expect that people will be there from dawn to dusk, but.
But Mike wants to be there for the elephants.
If, if, if I wanted to get online and get more information, where would I go? Is there a Facebook page?
There is a Facebook page, and there's.
And what is that, what is that Facebook?
That face is White Day, and on Instagram as well, thank you, would you, would you like to join our committee?
You're doing a good job.
So, we're really hoping that there will be a Saturday without rain, which we have not had in.
Quite some time.
A long time. That's it.
Nothing, thank you.
All right, I just have a couple of things I wanted to bring up, the Select Board reorganized after the last election here, and they sent around a copy of the, the.
Liaisons.
The new, uh.
Liaison.
Liaison, well, no, they have done the liaisons, and I was gonna say that.
I'm sorry.
The, the chair, the vice chair.
Oh, oh, officers, yeah.
Their, uh, their management structure, and then they're gonna have the liaisons rescheduled again.
Okay.
And our last liaison was Nicole Minor, I don't remember that.
Uh, she was, and, um.
I thought it was Jen Turner for some.
I'm, well, Jen, it had been Jen, um, so, yeah, Nicole came and talked to me sometime last summer, and so I put her on our list whenever I send out the updates for the meeting, she's on the list, but I haven't heard from her since.
So we'll see who our new liaisons it's gonna be, we'll know shortly. Everybody got a copy of the notice that there's a new town logo that's been approved by the Select?
Tom, yeah, Tom logo, not the town seal, that's the same.
It's gonna have a bar in it and a tractor.
Bar and a tractor, and, yeah.
gazebo.
That kind of stuff.
Gazebo, yeah.
The listing for the Select Board on the town website, the, the positions that we hold in, as management, you know, on, on the board, is a couple of years old now.
Yeah, it is.
You know who to talk to about getting that changed, especially since we've just changed it around?
Yeah, uh, I should, I have a follow-up on that, I used to do it, but nobody taught, taught me how to do the newer webpage, so, um, so I will, I will, I will see what I can do about that.
And, um, just to go back to the cannabis social equity again, we're gonna get something up on the website, and you think that's gonna do it for now?
For now, yeah. For now, because we don't have anything else.
Okay, when you get that, the verbiage for that, could you just circulate it, you know, so everybody can have a look at it and see what's gonna happen? And, uh, that's everything I have, so, if we have, let's see, oh, unless anybody has anything else they want to bring forward tonight, I'm gonna finish in one hour and five minutes, and make a motion that we close the meeting.
I'm sorry.
Second, if I put your motion, made it second and no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I put short five zero zero, we're adjourned.